In Jackson, Mississippi. So I officially call this meeting to order. Mike Pruitt will lead us in the pledge and Matt Mayo will lead us in our invocation.
If everyone would please stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you will join me in a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for another day, for the opportunity to come together. Dear God, we just ask that as we work on this business for the benefit of the state, we just ask that you bless our endeavors and we just thank you for all that you've given us. Forgive us where we fail you. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Good to see everyone this morning for day two of our work here in Jackson. So thank you for making it in this morning at nine o'clock.
Y'all meet yesterday?
Yes, sir, we did. We did note that you were missing.
Oh, he was missing?
You know, I had to do that. I'm sorry.
After you showed up, we realized that you were missing. So we'll go from there.
Who is he?
Board members, you have received a copy of the agenda. Please note that this is a special called meeting and therefore the only business that can be transacted is that which has been specified in the call of this meeting, which is the budget. At this time, I want to entertain a motion for approval of our agenda.
No move.
Billie Jean on the second and Ronnie on the blue. Did that backwards. Ronnie on the motion, Billie Jean on the second. Any other questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item five of the agenda, FY 2027 overview and presentation of the budget. And here we go.
Passing copies around to you now.
All right, Ms. Wiggins, this is, I think, your first time to do this.
I know, right?
So we're looking forward to it.
Baptism by fire.
Always, always.
So y'all throw into the deep end.
Thank you.
Thank you. You all should be receiving copies. Good morning, Chairman East, Dr. Evans and members of the board. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present our 2027 FY 2027 budget request to you. And we'll just move through as you have questions. You don't have to wait until the end. You can ask me in real time. And I'm going to claim that I'm new today, so do I get a little grace for that, right? All righty. So before we begin, I will actually turn it over to Dr. Evans if he'd like to begin, lead us off with talking about the 2026 legislative priorities.
Sure, thank you. And I will tell you, Ms. Kim being very modest, she acts like she's hit the ground running like she's been doing this job for 20 years. So I appreciate her. So just know that in this budget, we have really tried our best to cut it to the point where like it's razor thin from a state standpoint, but we're trying to make sure here we're being very fiscally responsible for the state's dollars that we're asking. So we've really narrowed the scope of it. We've really narrowed the priorities so that we didn't have like 10 or 15 budget priorities because in my opinion, you don't have any if you have that many. So we've made it more concise and also the plan is in the end, and I'm sure Ms. Kim should probably allude to this, is kind of take a little bit of a different approach when we're giving our hearing. During hearing is to put it more in the form of like a business proposal, if you will, so that our legislators, they can see the whole process and why we're asking for each component of it for an outcome. So it'll have like an infographic and it'll be very easy. Instead of just a list of items that are like A, B, C, D. Because it's very easy to not be able to see the outcome of that process. So that's been the methodology behind this. Thank you so much.
Okay, all righty. So we'll move forward. Okay, so our budget overview, we'll actually be talking through, we'll focus more today on the general education budget and the CTE budget. We'll speak very briefly to the Mississippi School Funding Formula and Chickasaw Session budget. As you are aware, just for budgeting purposes, we have preliminary numbers for MSFF and for Chickasaw. We will present final FY 27 numbers to you all in the July board meeting. Our funding stream with regard to state funding comes from five different sources. General Fund, EEF Funds, Education Trust Fund, Healthcare Expendable Fund and Trust Fund, and then capital expense funds. So with that, we'll jump right into 27, our budget request. So as I said, just for budgeting purposes, the preliminary estimate for to fully fund the Mississippi School Funding Formula stands now at about $2.9 billion, which represents about 89% of our total agency budget request. CTE, our total request is $93,000, which represents about 3%, but it does reflect a modest increase over our FY 26 funding level, about 0.26%, $244,000. And to Dr. Evans' earlier point, what you will see as we move through the presentation is that the agency sets forth or presents to you a very conservative budget as we move into or contemplate 27. Chickasaw School Fund, $19 million, which is, as I said, just a preliminary number and we will have final numbers for 27 that we'll present to the board in July. Now moving into the actual agency appropriation, the general education budget reflects or represents a request of about $233, $234 million. And that represents, again, a modest increase, about 10%, almost 10% over our 26 funding level. And we are saying in the presentation, as you may notice going through our projected FY 26 budget because of the delayed appropriations process, we do have House Bill 42, which was our 26 appropriations bill. However, it's still waiting to be signed by the governor. So at this point, we still say it's a projected number. So as I said, so we've got about a $20 million, $20.1 million increase in our request over what we project our appropriation will be for FY 26. And that $233 million includes the combination of direct support funds, which you'll educate a child, national board teachers, also many of the flow-through programs that we, that recur annually, and then our state special schools and our school attendance officers. Now, for the actual agency operations itself, as Dr. Evans likes to say, we're a broke school district. We operate on a very meager amount. So you see less than 1% of our total agency budget reflects the operational support that the agency runs from, and that's about $21, $22 million. And so we're requesting a $4 million increase over 26, what we project our 26 appropriation will be, which reflects a 22% increase in our ask over 26. So our total request is $3.3 billion for FY 27, and that again represents a conservative, we believe, request over what we project our 26 appropriation will be, and that's at $25 million, which still is less than a half percent of what we project our total our request will be.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
Do we have anything projected that was a direct legislation that had to be implemented that is a new expense to us from a legislative action and did have funding tied to it? And that's part of the increase? Or?
Yes. So can I?
Sure. Absolutely. No, you go. Absolutely. Never go already there. Go ahead.
Well, the money people need to talk. I'm probably way too in the weeds. Y'all know that. But the primary piece of that that was, we've asked for. So because my thing on slides five and six, once we get through this, I'm going to come back and talk about the priorities that are associated with it because I wanted you to see the dollars and then be able to associate them back to the priorities. And a fairly substantial amount of that requested increase is in synchronous learning platform, which we had appropriated this year. We were lucky enough to get that, about 2.2 million, somewhere in that ballpark.
Yes, 2.1 million.
It was, it's a fairly substantial.
Yeah, and if you're going to cover it, that's okay. I just want to make sure that what's really new to us, that we decided we need to tackle versus what's legislated, and then making sure that there was funding attached to any new legislation.
So we did actually have one item that was in there that really was, kind of met the criteria and we just pulled it out. You know, it's not, it wasn't a mandate. It was, I'm okay with asking for money for us, not for anybody else, if that makes sense. So they could put their own human capital in trying to accomplish that.
And in addition to what Dr. Evans just shared, there is one that I would consider an unfunded mandate, driver penalty. In regular session 2024, Senate Bill 2695 required mandatory drivers aid in all public schools in combination with public schools. And so we are requesting a $6.7 million increase to support that effort. I think it was delayed a year for implementation. So you will see a request of about $7 million.
That's what I thought that was. I thought there was something like that out there.
Sorry for whatever reason. You are absolutely correct. It was supposed to be implemented, I believe, this coming year and they've had to push it back. That's not at any delay of hours.
No.
Put the plan together and it was some time ago.
Okay. All righty. And this really just, again, provides by the state support funding categories that I mentioned earlier, it really just kind of gives you a little more detail about where those requests, where those dollars actually show. You'll see in 26, we received $126 million and that was, again, at the, you know, wish of the legislature, they provided that money for the Mississippi eye screening. We don't request that in 27. It's not a part of our 27 request, but it does show up in what we protect our 26 appropriation will include. You'll see the same for CTE, for the VOTEC funds, how they break down and where those state sourced buckets of funds come from. Okay? So what I'll do now is I'll move through each office and programs and we'll get to your question with regards to kind of how our request, what makes up our total request. So we'll begin in the office of the chief academic officer. We are requesting a $3.6 million increase in our early childhood efforts, and that is to allow us to be able to expand the early learning collaborative cohorts and also the pre-K programs to expand the efforts that that office has made with regard to supporting pre-K efforts. Also additional contract workers to help with the monitoring and the assessment of the efforts of that program. Here we've also got the expansion of the Literacy Based Promotion Act. It really reflects just a minimal increase that really is just to sustain just minor increases in the ongoing operations of that program, not a significant ask in that area. This particular one, Dr. Evans, I'm sure you will speak to, represents a new funding request for us in support of one of Dr. Evans' initiatives, which is a $9 million request in support of the Adolescent Literacy Program Initiative. And this includes, as you will see, the host of staff and administrative support that will be required to initiate this program successfully, and also additional professional development opportunities that would have to be provided to teachers.
What is that program?
Adolescent Literacy.
What's that mean?
Grades four through, I didn't interrupt you.
No, you're fine.
It's a literacy initiative that encompasses grades four through three. I mean, K through three, it's a distinction. It has been, we've received tremendous support of wanting to push that forward legislatively.
Thank you, Will.
Because you get national recognition for what you do.
Yes, sir. I'm a yes man. We're trying to expand that, you know, because it also, it looks different than the other one. How that works, it's a different, same out, general, looking for the same outcome, it's a bit of a different type of work. And that is what the original funding to get the Literacy Based Promotion Act, what that dollar amount was originally to get it going. So that's where that, that's where that number came from.
Innovative programs during SER, one of the uses of our SER funds, we use to fund a career, a college and career readiness platform. With the sun setting of SER funds, we are including a request of $2.7 million to continue that offering to students and school districts. So, and then there's $300,000 that we have in to expand the work and to provide grants to support districts and schools of innovation, to expand and support the efforts there. This represents our special school requests. We are modest requests in most places. MSMS, they're requesting $474,000, and that's to support two new positions, they have a business manager and a computer science engineering position. Also, you'll see minor things like, not minor things, but the purchase of a school bus and some renovations to some of their facilities, and again, just the general increases that are associated with their operating costs. Mississippi School for the Arts, they're requesting an increase of $713,000, again, to support the onboarding of several new positions, nurse, general service positions, resident education parents, and also to support, again, increase, the increases in all the operating costs for the school. MSDB, $1.6 million increase, and that's to provide additional funds to cover the increasing costs associated with Braille textbooks, utility fuel, operating costs, and the like. And you'll s-
No, Dr. Evans, off the top of your head, and I'll be shocked. How many students are served in each of those schools?
About 275. The lady just walked in, they can help us with that number. MSMS, about 275.
They graduated.
Somewhere, yeah, MSA is, I'm not, I'm.
MSA's smaller, they're probably, they graduate 43, it's half year, but they've got 70 juniors coming in next year, and that's the highest class they've had since pre-20.
Probably 125 or something like that.
And then MSDB's 100 or less. It's somehow, it's depending on which side.
The left side is much, is larger. One side they have, maybe more of 80 to 100, and then you talk about like 150 plus, I think that's, and that varies.
On MSMS, and what's requested there, I'm assuming this just assumes business is normal, moving forward where they are today, normal operation, because anything else would be legislated if they chose to.
It is, yes, sir. We were still having, we're engaged in very in-depth conversations to try to work through some of that. So I will say that we have gotten confirmation that the relationship there is a, oh my goodness, tenant, I have, I was having a moment there, I'm sorry, a landlord-tenant type setup. So that confirmed that we are not, as a state agency, responsible for the buildings in which MSMS utilizes. And we're in the process of trying to work through the final MOU to establish that and to very clearly articulate that and having, we're having to go back and forth.
Do we anticipate MSMS making a budget request for capital improvements to those buildings?
So we don't, MSMS, my conversation with President W., I explained that, you know, I really personally, and I was not speaking for our board, but personally, I didn't feel very comfortable going and MBE and self advocating for dollars for that university. I feel as though that's their responsibility. But if there is a capital project that MS, that School of Math and Science, MSMS, is involved in, and we work together, I'll be more than happy to go. But I don't intend on going just to advocate, because I don't go to advocate for any other college or university to receive dollars. But we definitely, and Jennifer, Ms. Jennifer was in that meeting, so I very much so am on board with us working together to accomplish it. But I don't think it's appropriate for us to go and advocate.
Is state still open to our, MSMS moving in?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I feel as though they are, but when we, I feel as though they are. I don't want to speak for them right now because it's been a couple of months. But, you know, that, right now, the ball's in the court of the legislature.
Yeah, but we've got no matter if they do or not, we've got to operate there now.
And we're operating like it's, yes, sir, we're operating.
If we've had issues, conditions of building, things like that, we just, I guess that's what you're trying to work out in that relationship and who's responsible.
And I'll tell you, I think that relationship has improved some, too. There were some things that were clarified, some conversations that were had that helped, I think, maybe clear the air, if you will. So I feel like it's a little better, but it hadn't really lended itself over the MOU yet. So our goal is to have that, it was on the agenda for this meeting and then we did pull it because we didn't have the final, it's not to a point where it's appropriate for both parties yet, so it will for sure be on the, the goal is for it to for sure be on the July board agenda. The MOU you just referenced, what would be the time, the timeframe, is that a one year? It's one year. Year to year? And the renovation dollars here, we're talking about paint. We're talking about very minimalistic type things that are there. It's not large, it's not like HVAC projects. I could see where that, someone might think that was, because that wouldn't touch a lot.
Yeah, that's what I was, that was what promptly.
Yes, sir.
It's not enough to really make.
It's like, it's some paint, it's, you know, stuff here and there. Just.
Cosmetic.
Thank you, cosmetic.
Just normal wear and tear.
Yes. To make things more appealing to the eye, I guess it was, freshen it up.
And you'll see just the budget detail behind there that looks at the entire office, editing office, by program area to show you what the FY 27 request is over the FY 26 projected appropriation and the difference. We'll move to slide 18. That is our school and district transformation office. The request there, again, reflects one of the legislative priorities, and that is a $757,000 request to provide contractual leadership coaches to support at-risk, failing or at-risk schools, to support that work. The average funding for that office is $1.1 million, but this is a new ask for us. See, that's Mr. Farrell's budget there, and it just kind of lays out where that request is. All righty, for our career and technical education quest, not a significant request there, less than $200,000, and that request really just, again, supports increases, minor increases in operational costs. See the detail in support of there, all of the programs that are included in the VOTEC budget area and where that line item requests fall. On slide 22, we'll move to the Office of Chief Accountability. So we are requesting a $1 million increase in support of the community oriented policing services program, and that will allow us to support the 182 school resource officers and the 278 school districts that we currently support by providing a 50-50 match to cover salaries there. It also would allow funding or provide funding to allow for the award of additional funds in support of the effort to expand the efforts into schools not currently included in the current program. The Office of Educator Misconduct, this is a new funding request for us, and it reflects a request of $167,000, and this is to increase the number of investigators or to actually add investigators into the Office of Accountability to preserve and to investigate and preserve the integrity of testing in our local school districts, and also to review, as I said, educator misconduct on the part of teachers there. So this is a new request for us, not contemplated in our FY 26 funding level. Driver penalty, and this was the funding mandate, the unfunded mandate we were just speaking about earlier. It reflects a $6.7 million increase to support and to bring us into compliance with Senate Continuing on statewide assessment test security, we are requesting a $2.8 million increase over our FY 26 projected funding level. We will bring later to the board some additional assessment contracts, and you'll see where there have been increases in the contractual support necessary to meet the testing requirements as required by state law. So this is an additional funding request for us here. We're also requesting an additional $450,000 for professional development to support the salaries and travel of four professional development coordinators to provide, to develop training modules and instructional resources and to provide face-to-face professional development. And these funds would be included in the services that we contract with the RISAs to provide annually. MTR, in our FY 26 appropriation this year, we've received a $3.5 million line item appropriation to support the MTR effort, and so we are requesting to have that amount of funding re-appropriated to us in FY 27 to continue that work. And this is a new funding request, orientation for school leaders. It represents a $272,000 request, and this will allow each of the five participating RISAs to develop and to deliver one module per month to complete an entire series for local school leadership in support of the efforts there in the schools. So this is a new funding request for us. MSI also is a new funding request for us at $275,000. It will continue the effort for approximately 30 new and career superintendents enrolled in the current cohort three. Educator licensure, you are familiar with our, the call center that we initially deployed using some SER funds. So this request represents the $447,000 necessary to continue that operation. That includes providing staff to manage the calls, but also to provide support to handle all of the costs associated with MECA, the hosting and licensing fees associated with MECA, and Carousel, which is the phone system that runs our call center. So this reflects that. We had, right now in FY 26, we are, we've appropriated $100,000 to support that effort, but we, but it's not sufficient to cover the full effort. Accreditation, we are requesting additional funds here, $316,000 to increase the capacity to conduct onsite reviews, to ensure compliance with our accreditation standards. You'll see the detail to support each program in that particular office. We'll move to slide 29, which is the Office of our Chief Information Officer. We are requesting a $1.1 million increase, which really represents an increase in the operational costs associated with the deployment of MSIS 2.0. And that, as I said, as you'll see, it's just supporting licensing fees, hosting fees to that. See here, supporting detail for that.
Road shows and boot camps.
Additional training.
That's John.
That's John. All righty, so the Office of Educational Accountability, we're requesting level funding for that particular office over what we project we'll need in FY 26. The same in slide 23 for our Office of General Counsel and Human Resources, we're requesting level funding for FY 27. Same for the Office of Chief of Operations, we're requesting level funding as well. And Office of Chief of Communications and Government Relations, that increase is really a level funding increase. The minimal increase is about $6,000, so it's level funding, and that really just supports increases in operational expenses. Office of- Office of the State Superintendent, too, is requesting level funding for FY twenty-seven. That concludes our budget highlights. Have questions?
Ask one thing back on page fourteen, the innovative programs, when it says to reinstitute a college and career readiness platform. Does that mean that the past few years, that that was not a part of the school systems?
So you got it, you got it.
We actually have or have had a college and career readiness program, several dollars.
And does that include a component of financial literacy?
It would have financial literacy. That would be, would help with our career exploration, uh, career implementation, our ISP, which is the individual student plans that they start doing in the seventh grade, we include all of that.
Right, right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Previously, you'd have, through ESSR dollars, it was, I'm not naming, I'm not advocating for any, but, but it was Major Clarity was the name of the platform that was utilized. So if you were to ask them, what would they use, that's what they would, they would tell you.
Thanks.
Unless they bought something in addition to.
So it's going to go away in the current year?
It was funded with ESSR.
So the districts would have to choose if they want to pay to keep it, is that, that is an option?
That is an option.
Because there are some, I understand they're going to do that, but there's some they can't afford.
Personally, I, when I was there, we already purchased that. We were, we appreciated the state paying for it as well, so we were able to do something else with the dollars. We're trying to provide the funding for them.
Had any conversation with USBOE about funding for this?
So there is very little conversation coming out there, I mean, extremely, it's anemic, as far as the information goes. I did have a, a Teams meeting, a Zoom meeting with CCSO yesterday. And the secretary is encouraging states to reapply again after we've reappplied twice. So I don't know if that's just, I don't really know what that means. Although what we're doing, we are, we are going to reapply for some of the things we've been denied. Now, what we've tried to do is some of the work that was like ongoing, of course, it was all important work, like the work that was really in the, in the heat of what was happening. We've tried to utilize any federal dollars that we could through our title, state activities dollars, working with Dr. Nelson to try to massage, I guess maybe is a good word, so that we can keep that, that work going. But those dollars aren't dollars that districts could utilize for like instruction or anything like that. This is, we didn't take anything away from districts, it was just, we're trying to be, we're just trying to pivot and figure it out, I guess, if that makes any sense. But, uh, you know, I was told several times that there would be no decreases to title, you know, traditional title dollars. But now the conversation is starting to center around block granting, that's why I was always saying, you've got to be careful what you're asking for in a block grant, is to how the dollars are put in there. The other part of it is, is they're looking at decreasing or maybe cutting out late liquidation period, because, you know, lots of times in federal programs, they're working through three years of budgets all at the same time, right? So I do think there's an appetite to stop that, which that's difficult, because it also has an impact on our budget. Because when you look at indirect cost, which is, comes directly back, and you look at the ESSR dollars that are gone, if you will, and that indirect cost, which has helped support the agency, makes, makes you lose a little sleep at night trying to keep things just running. But other than that, no, sir, there's not been, no, sir, there hasn't been. I think they're, obviously, they're in the process of trying to get their budget, I think they're referring to it as a skinny budget, I think, is what I hear on the, on the news, so.
Get as possible.
Yes, sir. So we're trying to reflect that here as a worst-case scenario in case something happens, so.
Looked at the total number of students that are exiting in twenty-five, working in twenty-five, twenty-six, entire state student population.
So I don't have that number, we have seen a gradual decrease over the last ten-plus years. I don't have that number, I would tell you the wrong number if I had that.
A decrease of entering?
No, the, uh, the total number of students being enrolled in public. For whatever reason, either that or they're leaving the state, or, yes, sir, I'm sure there's a multitude. Graduating is the quickest way, obviously, they leave, but it's the coming back, some of it's birth rates, you know, we're seeing, we're seeing decrease in birth rates and.
Last time I looked, I think it was a little over five thousand.
That's the number I was going to say, but I didn't have the exact number, so I didn't want to throw one out there.
What, these are just state dollars, what are the title dollars and all of that that goes into the budget, too? What's the total that flows through MDE?
I can tell you the percentages.
Tell me the percentages, that's fine.
One second. Oh, I can't see anymore. I'm wearing a blue shirt, I got. Okay, yeah, there's an inside joke there. Uh, so in, um, we look at about twenty-three percent of our total, about twenty-three percent of our total budget is federal dollars, thirty-two percent local dollars, and then forty-five percent being like state dollars, what we're talking about right now. You know, those local, obviously, millage rates that have one tax, and then federal being obviously the title programs, as well as special education, career and technical, federal dollars that flow through. So it's twenty-three, not to repeat myself, but it's twenty-three federal, thirty-two local, and forty-five state.
That's what I was.
Yes, sir. If we can get you like the exact dollar amount, I'd have to.
No, I'm just looking at the.
Yes, sir.
There's, again, federal's still up in the air.
I'm, promise you, I'm as worried about it as everybody else. That's why, again, we're trying to be like, you know how many times these chiefs would come back and said, you're really cutting that out? I'm like, yeah, we're really cutting it out, we got to, we got, I think Ms. Kim's got, she's like, yeah. But, um, we just. Oh, yeah, no, that's not that, she's just, I think she probably decreased the number on this budget request about probably fifteen times, so. But if I could add one last piece, because I was going to wait till the end so you could kind of see for the dollar amounts, some of the, and I kind of alluded to this earlier about how we were trying to like package it differently, the budget request in our hearing, because what I did is I went back and I watched on YouTube several other agency heads and how they gave their budget during their budget hearing. Yeah, I'll do it the same way, do it the same way we do it. And I see how unsuccessful lots of times it is, because we are requesting this, but by no means are they, obviously, I have, I don't think they're going to give us all this, obviously. But it is tremendously less than it has been in the past. So we're packaging it all into, uh, kind of the title of it would be moving Mississippi forward. And in that business proposal, if you will, you have the four through eight adolescent literacy initiative, you have a K-12 math initiative with a, a more intense focus primarily, right now, on grades two through six. And understand, in this plan, we're including things that cost money, things that don't cost money, so that you can see that whole, the whole continuum. Uh, the board governance overhaul piece, as far as how that operates in our district primarily, it's not this board, it's a district. A redesign of the K-12 experience so that we, education is not what it used to be, it doesn't operate the way it used to be. The expectations are different, right? Expectations of business industry are very different, so redesign of that, breaking it down by your elementary and middle school, and then a really intense focus on, on the nine through twelve experience as well. As well as, we're currently in the process of articulating with Accelerate, we've really formed a good relationship with Accelerate, Dr. Corey Taylor, I really appreciate it. So articulating what the role of IHL is in career and technical, what the role of the community college is in career and technical and workforce development, and what the K-12 role is. Because they're like overlapping, and it's causing dollars to be spent that maybe could be repurposed in different ways. And that, that's something that doesn't cost money, but it'll take some legislative, potentially it will take some legislative work to push it through. Also in that, under the umbrella of moving Mississippi forward, we've got Mississippi leads. So Mississippi leads, um, you know, one of the main reasons teachers say they leave the field is the administration, that's just, that's a fact, you know, it is what it is. And so we for sure need to be providing leadership training. And what our goal has been, working, Dr. Vanford, is to really beef up that leadership training that the, that the department provides. My goal is for us to get back to the days, because those of you that have been around for a while, you remember, MDE used to really pretty much be seen as the provider of that, or I, I saw it that way, you know? Uh, and I'm not any different than anyone else, but now it's been several years since we've seen it that way. And also the quality of some of it, and I'm not being negative towards anybody's training, but the quality of some of it, I don't think necessarily was meeting the needs of what our administrators are needing. So that's why we went out and Mississippi Superintendent's Institute, and we got that funding through a private donor to get that started. Uh, we're, our first cohort will be going through in July, and then we'll have a second cohort that's also training our trainers, some of our veteran superintendents that want to go through. I'll be part of it, too. Uh, so, and then that funding request is tied back into the second, the third cohort, if you will. So we're massaging how we can do some of that as well. So, uh, the, obviously, the synchronous learning, we're very happy that we got that two point two million, so that's part of that as well. Uh, we're, actually, we're meeting this morning about that. And that's, we have a whole nother side conversation about how that, the idea behind that whole process is creating like, you know, super teachers, if you will, because of all the support, and then they.
That's all about letting a district that doesn't have access.
Yeah, and we, yes, sir, absolutely, and it's through a partnership of Mississippi Public Broadcasting, so we partnered to get that done. Also, and they've already done a lot of this work, with the orientation of school leaders, a lot of that's been revamped. Uh, and where our goal is to be able to like provide like the streamlined leadership training from you graduating from the university all the way through up to the superintendency. There's that District of Transformation amendment that didn't get done last year just because of all the stuff. I blame everything on income tax now, because that's kind of what, what stopped legislative process last year. Uh, and then obviously the MTR, which wasn't funded, got refunded, and that's a big, that's a big, a big deal. So there's some lofty things, like we've, we're pushing, there's a lot that goes into those. And a lot of this is, you know, those additional projects that we're pushing forward to try to move, move Mississippi forward, that's why the name of it is Moving Mississippi Forward. And so it's individual projects, it's, you know, we're not, we're not just here to do the day-to-day operations, we're here to do the day-to-day operations and push the state forward. You know, that's our, that has to be our mission here at MDE, in my opinion, that's what we, what we have to do.
How does, on Mississippi Early Learning Collaboratives, where they've got the public-private match program, where you get the tax credits? Do we get, are they budgeted a certain dollar amount they get no matter what, and then that tax credit match go to those, directly to those collaboratives, is that completely separate? There's some money that's given no matter what.
I don't know exact, I don't know that I can answer your question correctly. You know.
Tax, I'm not familiar with the tax credit.
And there's a dollar for dollar, up to a million dollars, an individual or business person.
I think that goes directly to the district.
It goes to the.
Yeah, it goes through the districts, but the money that we're talking about for Mississippi Early Learning Collaborative is going regardless of there's a, there's a private support of it as well.
The grants, the twenty-four million, yes, sir. Yes, sir, okay, I understand your question there, yeah.
No, it does go absolutely directly to those collaborators, it's an underutilized program, too. I wish we would, I wish it was better advertised and people understood what it meant.
Let me get you a better, a more, a more in-depth answer, the lady just walked in the door, that absolutely, ask that question one more time.
Who was it?
Dr. Dent.
Yeah, Dr. Dent, I talked to her a bunch.
Yeah.
Just talking about the funding that went from, the, the money that we budget for early learning collaborative has nothing to do, it doesn't involve the match or anything that requires the public, people getting the tax credits. That money goes straight to those, this money's our support tool regardless of any other funding sources.
That's, yes, yes, so we, we give them funding, and then they are responsible, the collaboratives are responsible for obtaining either match money or tax donations to be able to meet that match, that one-to-one match.
So there isn't, so these dollars require a district match that we're, that we're budgeting?
It requires a one-to-one match of some kind, either in the district or in kind. So a lot of times, our programs will use head start salaries with their head start partners as the match, so that also contributes.
The in-kind covers the vast majority of anything.
That's it.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Those dollars are already spending.
Any questions, any others?
I'll ask one more, too, on this, the teacher residency program, I'm assuming we fully fund that budget, we have enough people to apply for that to, and all these type grant programs that go to local districts and support things like that. I'm assuming those things are fully utilized by the districts, we're spending our budget dollars.
Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, and there's more demand, but we're, we're fully out, we're fully.
We, we were really pleased at the dollar amount that we were funded at the last, this last session that concluded. Yes, and we asked for more, because it's a, yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
We'll see you next month with the final report. All right, I motion to adjourn this meeting and move into our record schedule for board hearing in about ten minutes. And, uh, it's Jacobs and Ms. Warner, all in for your stay on.